And this meeting is being recorded. At this time, I would like to acknowledge receipt of correspondence by the planning board. A letter from Sheila Hill on May 29th titled Fast and Loose with Electorate. A letter from Ms. Lorraine Iavoni on June 9th, Proposed Changes Chart. A letter from Mr. Susko on 6/23, Spy Rock Hill A and R Refile of Letter of Protest. On 6/23, a letter from Mr. Colbert, a status of A and R on Spy Rock Hill. And a letter from Mr. Gary Russell on June 24th, Support of the Planning Board Town Administrator and Planner. At this time, I'd like to take public comments for items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Is there anybody who wishes to speak?
I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Gudrow.
My name is Peter Gordo from Hamilton, Mass., and I am representing Self-Signaling Technology. And the folks at Self-Signaling asked me to come before you just because I don't think we have shared our gratitude for the support of this board for all its efforts in the first quarter drafting the revised bylaw and then, you know, supporting it through the town meeting process. And I think we wanted to just express our thanks to the board for that. We also thought you might want a brief update on what we're up to at this point. We're in the process of selecting a design team. We expect that process to continue through the summer. During the fall, we expect to begin real design, all with the hope of being in front of the planning board sometime in the first quarter to begin the site plan review process. And then lastly, we've obviously got a lot of work to do before we come before you, but if there are things that come up in the meantime, know that you're welcome to contact myself or Mark Glofsky with any questions or concerns. We're happy to come back and try and deal with anything that may come up during that time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Creighton.
Yes, just to remind you that depending on your timing, we have opened a public hearing for Section 6, which is a site plan review and have draft site plan review changes that depending on your timing will be passed or will be. So, we're a little bit in limbo, but you might want to take a look at them. They move us to performance-based change, review rather than a more prescriptive version. So, I think they're good planning measures that a design team should be able to work with, but before you file, go, before you go and file a site plan review plan under the old rules, let's have a conversation about where we are in that process and what makes sense.
Do you have a sense of what your timing is to bring those before the community?
I think we're gonna try to get them to a Fall Town Meeting, which is currently October 24th. There is a draft on the website. I can email you with which version, with the draft versions, but.
I'm happy to give it off the website, but thank you.
Right now, it's still a little hard to find, but there, if you go to zoning changes, it should be the new Section 6 and the new Section 12. And I can't, off the top of my head, tell you which of the articles, proposed articles, they were and were in the process of renaming those files, so.
We will chase those down.
Thank you, Sarah. Ms. Jakes?
Hi, Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. Thank you, Ron. And this is just sort of, I don't believe that we've actually settled on one date. We're looking at two at this point, just so that, Peter, it's nothing has been finalized yet. We wanted the planning board to have an opportunity to weigh in. So, we're just looking at a couple of dates at this point. So, either October 24th or November 14th. That's kind of what's being contemplated. I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and that's on our agenda tonight for discussion. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? So, next item on the agenda is an approval not required for one Spy Rock Hill. Sue Brown received an email to with, from the applicant to withdraw his application. Sue, anything further on that? Other than to withdraw?
No, nothing further. The request that came in via email was addressed to the board and is posted in the SharePoint. It is a simple request to withdraw without proposal noting that he should reapply. There would not be an added cost since he has paid that fee already.
At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to, from the board to accept, a vote to accept the withdrawal.
I'm moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Laura, you've joined us. And Ms. Tenny? Ms. Tenny? Are you or not connected? You would just give us a thumbs up for yes and a thumbs down for no. Okay, Ms. Tenny votes yes. So, Gail, that's six in favor. Motion passes. At this point, I'd like to continue the deliberation portion of the public hearings opened on 5/17 on draft zoning bylaw changes. If there is no more deliberation at this point, I'd like to move to close that part of the public hearing. Ms. Creighton?
I'd be happy to move that. I just, do we want to continue until the fall? Or are you going to just comment on what we have coming up?
Yes, that'd be good if you can give us an overview, maybe next steps.
Sure. So, sort of are taking a little breather, as everybody knows. The website is in the process of being updated. The old materials have all been deleted. The files for the past town meeting are there. They will be renamed so that the public see, a little has a little easier time finding them, but nonetheless, they're all there. We received some suggestions through correspondence about looking for a, particularly looking for a chart of what changes are there. That chart is there. It, any, any suggestions, certainly send them, I guess, to me and then we can get them, evaluate them and get them going. My list of sort of, if we have a town meeting at the end of October, that doesn't give us too much time after September 1st, maybe about six or seven weeks. So, I would propose that in the first week of September, that our, that the planning board come with comments on the on the proposed changes. Clearly, one of the things we need to do is meet with the ZBA and Sarah Melish had some specific comments, so that we need to schedule and go back to the Board of Selectmen, get an update, make sure they've had their questions answered and get their endorsement. And we do not need to hold a public hearing on the measures if we are within six months of May 17th, which is when the public hearing was. But we might decide that some of those measures warrant a public hearing, so we would want to decide that right away in the early September. So, I'll actually put tonight or before the weekend on September, whatever, first meeting in September's meeting packet, a note that says, you know, let's get comments and let's decide, make sure we decide if we want to have any public hearing that would warrant, you know, any substantial changes that would warrant a new hearing. Scope increase, I have one in my own mind, and that is this issue around accessory dwelling units and the comments we heard from the ZBA about the employee housing. And I think that warrants a little deeper dive from my perspective. So, that's on my list that we should, we could talk about. So, I think the other thing we've talked about is making sure that there are some additional articles and that the public is clear on what we're doing, but there's so perhaps some of that could happen in the summer, although I doubt that people are reading deeply these things. So, it's a pretty compressed timeframe, actually, September 1st to a town meeting, but I think we can, we've given people who are paying attention plenty of time to look at things and give us comments, so we'll take those into advisement. Thank you. So, in terms of continuing the public hearing, Ron, maybe the easiest thing to do, so we have to keep continuing it, but I think we probably have to leave it open, is to continue it to our first meeting in September. Does that make sense?
Does.
Okay, we got that date. I can look it up.
All right, while you're doing that, Ms. Foley has her hand up. There?
Thank you. Yeah, I am. And maybe I've dismissed it, but I do want to make sure that, a few things that we are spending this time doing further data gathering, engaging with the ZBA, trying to put together that matrix of changes for residents and really coming together with a strong public outreach to residents. I think residents are feeling a bit in the dark. I think it's easy to say things are out on the website, but it is cumbersome to find things. So, I do hope we use our time wisely for that. And I had sent a couple emails. I was looking for the track change document from our May 23rd meeting of items that changed from that meeting. Can we get a copy of that?
Everything I have is on the website. So, our changes were minor and if I, I, I'll have to look and see if I did the track change, if I save the track changes, but if I don't have them, I don't have them. Sorry, I will, I'll double check again, but. So, you'll, I think, I can assure you that as a volunteer, I did not make any changes that we didn't agree to as a group, so.
No, and I have no doubt about that, but I think as I'm, as I'm trying, and I've been involved since the beginning, it's very hard for me to keep track. I know there, there were a couple of things that were of a little substance that we voted on, so I would just like, and it seems so long ago now, though it was just a month ago. I would like a and you're a volunteer, so maybe other people can start doing the track changes, but we need something that we can know from, from document to document that's changed.
Okay, there is, actually, I correct that. I did put it in one of those memos. There is a paper copy in our, in our planning board mailbox of the changes that Helen Quasi made and that Alan Wilson suggested that as well, and all of those were entered. So, in that case, that is not a track changes. I'm not sure, I have track changes, but you can find those changes that were made, that were proofreading, are in a hard copy in the planning board mail area, and there's an envelope that says, please notify me if you take it, but please borrow it to, to use it. So, that's where you're gonna find those editorial changes that were made based on the review that was voted that Chris and I and Sue Brown could do. So, that's the hard, there's a hard copy of the entire packet in our, in our mailbox area. I'm forgetting.
But that's, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for the changes that the board voted on on May 23rd.
Okay, well, I'll look and see what I have, but I can I'll do the best I can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and with those other.
All I can say is that the, you'll, the changes are reflected in the final version. And so, whatever differences there are between the two, if I have a track changes, I will put it up, but I'm not sure I do. And our version, unfortunately, I cannot figure out how to use our version of SharePoint to get version control. If some, the IT person that doesn't seem to be able to, there isn't anybody at Town Hall who understands the SharePoint, so that's another problem. But I have been, I'll certainly look for anything that is, that I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Melish, you have your hand up.
Yes, so there's a change in the bylaw that I feel is a non-starter, and that is an existing non-conformity that has always been done via special permit and is now requiring a variance. I have a decision I've just reviewed from Mark Glofsky, which gives the case data regarding the fact that it needs to be a special permit, not a variance. And we've gone back and forth with attorneys, probably five or six times on this. So, I will send you what I have on that decision, but to me, that's a non-starter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, there's no other discussions on this.
Can, can you hear me, Ron? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my hand up.
Yes, Ms. Delicio.
Sorry, I thought we're gonna have some workshops too. I thought we're gonna clean up that matrix and then offer some workshops for residents to come in and talk to us face-to-face in person. Is that still on the schedule?
We haven't developed a schedule yet, so I think we have heard that. Realistically, I think we should, we'll have to schedule it, so if that, if the board thinks that's important, then we can certainly collectively figure out a way to do that. But I think that you're probably right. That would be, face-to-face would be a good way to, might be more efficient and more effective than zillions of articles, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The workshop would be what we're doing.
So, we'll probably have to actually schedule that at our, well, maybe we can look at a schedule in our August meeting, if we have an August meeting, or our July, next, next meeting on, on some of, putting an actual schedule together, because I think we're gonna need to do that before the September meeting. So, I can work on that.
Ms. Tenny? Can't hear you. Maybe you want to log back on or it doesn't, it seems to say you're unmuted, but. No.
How about that? Is that working?
We got you now.
All right, I've been moving around today, so my audio works in one place but not another. I think we'll be talking about the date of the public meeting later, so as we're just talking about the, you know, the best way to do outreach here, and we do consider the date of the public meeting, perhaps if we go with the later one that the Select Board is offering, that might give us time to do whatever format of workshop the planning board agrees to. And perhaps over the summer, we could work with some support from the town planner to put a communications piece together. I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but the table seems to be maybe the table needs to evolve or some way to compare the old language to the new language, so that it's not, perhaps it's less about tracking changes than just seeing what it used to say, what it says today and why the changes are proposed. So, we can certainly talk more about that, but maybe there's a way to kind of develop a communications tool that could be ready for the workshops, and if it's ready earlier, it could even be posted on the website for people to have a chance to look at that before we get together. And I don't know what sequence that is with zoning, but whatever we hear from the zoning board, we could work into that document. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I like your idea, Sarah, of moving the discussion to the first meeting in September, closing or moving not to get your language, but moving the
Yes, I'll move.
Continued public hearing to September. Remember, is that the 12?
Yep.
Okay.
When I say September 12th or our first meeting in September, whichever comes first.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I do have a question. Is Gail on? I don't.
Yes, she is.
Great.
I believe so. Gail, you want to give us a shout out?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes. Motion passes 6-0. Gail. So, the next item I have is a zoning impact study. So, during our month off, I received an email from Chris Olney, who took it on his own, based on some of the correspondence we see from the public on what the zoning impact changes were, would be based on our zoning, our proposed zoning changes. And he wrote a summary table that was placed in your packets where he went through each section and what the impact would be. And Chris, I was wondering if you could just give us a brief presentation of what you did and then I would open it up for board discussion and possible inclusion to our website. And you're on mute, Chris. Chris, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. So, basically, based on quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting and questions about what the impact of these zoning changes would be on on the fiscal and social fabric of the community, I put this together. I don't know how much detail you want to go into with this, but essentially, what I proposed is that any impacts on the town would come from increased residential development, since the zoning bylaw changes don't address commercial development at all. And the question would be, what changes in zoning would allow greater amounts of residential development by right in the current zoning versus the new zoning? And I considered a couple of methodologies how to do that. One would be to take a look at every parcel in every zoning district, figure out how many units would be allowed on that parcel by right, and then compare that to the zoning requirements, the dimensional requirements of the new zoning, and the difference in the number of units would tell us what the potential by right development could be in the town. However, there's a problem with doing that, which is it's possible that people can assemble parcels together and there could be changes in lot lines, and so another way of doing this would be take all the land in every zoning district, divide that by the size of the minimum lot requirement for residential use, and compare those to the existing zoning with the proposed zoning. But it turns out that there are no dimensional changes in the zoning, the new zoning bylaw. So, there'll be no change in the by right housing allowed under the new zoning bylaw. And I hope that kind of, that determination helps cool down some of the rhetoric that's been going on. However, I then go on to point out that there are three ways that residential development could be increased by special permit. One of those is a special permit to allow senior housing development in the town. And there are ways of studying the fiscal impact of that, which would be done as part of a special permit process. The second of the changes to the cluster zoning that currently is in effect, which we are expanding to allow in more places in town. However, the zoning cluster by itself does not alter the density of housing. It merely allows units to be clumped together without any increased number. But we do allow, in the new zoning, a density bonus of people, if a developer proposes things that would be in the town's interest, we could allow up to a 20% increase in unit count for a cluster if that was done. The clusters are very small. The chances of getting more than one or two units per year created this way is probably one or two units every four or five years that would increase over what's currently allowed. The third residential development possibility is the accessory dwelling units, and in that we're proposing that 20 accessory dwelling units be allowed by right in town each year if they meet certain specific criteria and that others be allowed by special permit. And there may be some impacts as a result of that, although they would probably be small, because these accessory dwelling units allowed by right would be within the existing buildings that are there. So, there'd be really little change to a neighborhood or to utility use or anything else. After all, the town currently allows borders in anybody's house, and they would have this much of an impact of not greater than an accessory dwelling unit in a, in a unit. So, that's basically the conclusion of the study. And then, at the end of it, I've created a table. It's actually a modification of the table is currently on the town's website, where each zoning change proposal is listed, the reason why the change is being proposed, and then what impact that might have. And since most of the changes are administrative really and ministerial in nature, they don't really affect the number of units that could be developed anywhere. So, in almost every case, there is no fiscal impact on the town by any of these changes. So, that's basically the study. There's a lot of details that we can discuss. And maybe changes that have to be made to it. It's just a proposal. I'm not sure what to do with this, whether we make it as a memo to the Board of Selectmen and to the ZBA for their discussion, or whether we, it's not a memo at all, but just something that the town can review on its own, maybe be the subject of a workshop. I don't know. I just thought it was important to get something out there to set some of the record straight here. Ron, you're muted now.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments from the board? I'll take comments from the board on this document, and I'll start with Sarah Creighton.
Well, thank you, Chris. Really impressive amount of work and thought. Two things, suggestions in terms of next steps. I'm sure that there may be some input you want to take, so maybe think about, let us know how you want to get some input and, or maybe there's a small subcommittee that works on this, just to kind of get that input and work on it. The other thought I had, two thoughts was perhaps there's someone at MAPC who could give it an eyeball and say, here's, there are professional, you know, assistants, people who might say, yeah, your rationale is sound here. I would make the following changes. Your assumptions are flawed here. So, just, or someone at MAPC who could maybe spend a couple of hours with perhaps a small subcommittee, I guess, would be the, the thought as an input. And then the second suggestion is that in our September timeframe, I think it's a good thing to share with the finance committee.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Laura?
Thanks, Ron. A lot of work gone into this memo. Thank you, Chris, for your summary. I'm, um, I, I like the idea if we could get someone from M A P C to work with us on a bit because I'm not sure. Exactly how to take this and turn it into a study, but perhaps if we did have. That input, we could also. Start to pull from this, the development of a communications piece, and I think the table at the back. Is a good start at that. I mean, maybe, you know, that could become a summary and the appendix is the comparison of the. Old and new language. I'm not sure yet, but I think. There is a nice start here at. Summarizing the how and the why, you know, what, what the changes are. The potential impact and why the changes are proposed. So I'd like to. Suggest we think about the table more and using that as a basis for a communications tool.
Thanks, Laura. Um, Mary Foley.
Thank you. Um, great job, Chris. This is obviously a lot of work put into this. And I'd love to be a part of trying to expand upon this. My concern is I think. Some of the things in here are opinion based and I'd like it to be more data driven. You know, when it's. Commented that things would be minimal impact. I think we have to. Be clear that we either know that or we don't know that, because that can just become a subjective, you know. One might think it's minimal, one doesn't. I think there were, were some inconsistencies that we could go over at some point and I think. The. I think what residents have been looking for and I think would be a good exercise for the planning board to do is look at these impacts holistically. Um, it's one thing to look at the zoning bylaw changes kind of in a, in a. In a, in a bubble, but we need to look at it in relation to if the 40B goes through, if we start developing out the LCD, if the. MBTA multifamily housing comes in. And then again, still attacking all the, the resident concerns with. You know. What entails with by right? How does that affect the abutters? How does that affect the appeal process, impact to water and sewer and all that? And to neighborhoods and really how are we chipping away at affordable housing piece with all of this, but. You know, again, maybe not all of that in, in one document. But. Yeah, like Sarah said, let us know how you want our comments and how we can move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, Chris, Ms. Delicio?
Hi, thanks. Um, so I would also like to be involved and I would like to thank you again. This is a lot of work and. I do think there needs to be some collaboration. Um, I guess just one, my first concern is just as an example was. Um, do not include any changes to dimensional requirements. So we did take away the minimum lot for. You know, a cluster housing, what we're calling that. So. We just need to be factual. I don't. I just think if we're going to put this document out there, I want it to be true and, you know, opinion is out. The other part ADUs, there's a little opinion there, some have found it. Um, objectionable seems unreasonable. Um, I do see ADUs going down a slippery slope. Right now we're proposing them to be in an existing building. There is wording that we will accept ADUs that are already built at this time. And so. If we're doing that, there, there, this language about the ADUs isn't necessarily true. So that's my concern. I think this is a great first step. Uh, but I think it just needs a little tuning up to just make sure it's facts. But thank you. Thank you.
Christina. So, um, how do we move forward on this? I think. Do we want to set it? Sounds like a lot of people want to make comments, Chris, to your document. Maybe we can set something up on our SharePoint where people can. Get you some comments and then maybe we can go over them at a subsequent meeting. Or any other thoughts on, on proceeding?
So I have a couple of ideas. I think sending me emails or questions would be great just to get started. Maybe you could copy Sue Brown and you run on these so we're not. So that we're not while we're doing this. Uh, I think, I think a question and answer thing attached to this might be useful as well as a way of. Uh, getting people's questions posed properly and answered properly. I always used to say there's no such thing as a bad question, but there are plenty of bad answers. Uh, so I, I, I want to make sure that we do. Uh, do present this factually and accurately to everyone. And if we can all agree on this, I think that would be a big step forward as well.
So I think the board is in consensus, if, tell me if I'm wrong, that we want to move forward with a document like this. I think the public. Would like some kind of impact. Information. Um, I think we've seen that in a few of the correspondence. So, um. I like the idea of getting some questions, maybe through me or Sue to Chris and we can. Try to hone this document to something that we can all agree on. If I hear, I don't hear any objection.
Ron, you have.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Um, I do want to, um, I know Mary has raised a number of times this multifaceted scenarios. And I, um. Sort of what I think it's scenario planning is what you're talking about is what if this, what if we get the SLB, what if we have the 48 housing, what? But we. We don't, though, I don't know how we do those scenarios without a full blown. Full blown, uh. Consulting and there's, there's still scenarios, there's still what, there's still. Unknown what will really happen, right? So I, I'm not sure that we can do that scenario planning unless. Um, unless you can be very specific about what the re. How does this affect those scenarios? So in my mind, the proposals we put forward in the zoning bylaws. Um, for, I think we're talking about, you know, senior housing or residential cluster and ADUs. Are really independent of those scenarios that you mentioned. And so I'm trying to understand. How we would, how those scenarios would change. The discrete analysis around these zoning changes and, and. What do we, how do we actually, uh, implement that scenario planning? Given the resources we have. So, um, Chris has done a great job of trying to do it in the, just discreetly looking at these changes. But that scenario planning, which I know you've asked for, like. How do we actually implement an analysis that would do that? And how do these zoning changes? How do the conclusions we make on that zoning changes change? In that, because I'm just, I'm not sure how to do it. So instead of us asking it, oh, instead of you asking over and over. Let's understand what. How we would actually do that if we're, if we, and if we really want to do that part of it. So I guess it's a question for Mary through you, Ron.
Uh, Mary? Do you want to respond?
Yeah, so I definitely asked for, um, scenarios. But I think more in the context of how, you know, how would a senior housing impact District D versus District C? How would. Residential conservation cluster impact District E? And how would it with B? You know what I mean? So more in that situational. Context. When I say that these need to be looked at holistically, it's not so much scenario driven, but it's. Kind of how much can the town handle? I think with planning, you always have to. You know, do what if scenarios, right? So you can't say. Or I, I would say like you can't, um, potentially. Um, propose all of these zoning bylaws at the same time saying we're going to expand the LCD and. In A, B, and C way in the same time that we might get a 40B in the same time we might get. Multifamily, how, you know what I mean? Like. Sometimes you just can't have it all. So I think we have to, um, and that doesn't mean. We couldn't have it all at some point, but I think we have to understand impacts and. Does it need to be spaced out more? Does it need to be slowed down in this area to ramp up this area? That's kind of what I need in that context.
So how? I'm still not thinking how we do it. What are the steps?
I, for me, the first step is.
What do we call? Like, what? How do, who do we call to get it done? Like, and how do we scope? That scope of work because, um. That's, that's what I'm trying to understand is like, what are the actual operational steps that we should do if we are going to do that? So that's, that's where I'm having a hard time.
I mean, I, I definitely don't have all the answers. I think the first step is, is always. Knowing that we are doing this in an environment that could also see. These other expansions happen. So I think we need a clear understanding financially. Um, in financial impact to town, we need a clear understanding of items. With water and sewer and schools and infrastructure and parking and all of that, right? So we. We have to know, okay, X amount of housing units is going to have an impact in this way. And so obviously then you can extrapolate things out, but. You know, and always with the eye towards affordable housing, right? Is this pushing us? Further away from our, our target or closer to our target? So, I mean, I think there's incremental ways to do it. Um, I think. We just have to be cognizant of that and, and. And in tandem, as we're doing these things, start to, start tackling those other issues. For data. I just don't, I just think we're missing a lot of data still.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Christina.
So I feel like I might backtrack. So if Laura has something to add to this conversation. I'd rather just pass off and bring up my comment because it's not related after.
Uh, go ahead, Laura.
Okay, uh, I was thinking about the point that Chris's memo made. That, um, there is no growth cap. On the town currently, our zoning has no growth cap. If we, so we make no change. Uh, and housing will continue to grow by right. Then I think that's the scenario that we need to compare to. I, I. I, I do believe that, um. We would be proposing to make zoning changes and you can argue what the changes are, but I think we're proposing to be cleaning up the zoning. Updating the zoning regardless of whether the 40B project happens or doesn't happen. Um, and other sort of future scenarios that I think. Will come or they won't come, but we would still want to update the zoning. So to me, the comparison is. With the current by right zoning, if you didn't. Even simplistically, I suppose, you know, just divided all of the land in any available area by the minimum lot size. And, um, looked at the sort of full build out scenario with. Existing zoning, you know, uh, regulations for single family housing versus what the incremental change would be with these three other types of proposed. Zoning, which, which are, which are, some of which are in our zoning now. So the changes are things like, um. Christina or Mary pointed out that we. Uh, currently require five acres or more, I think for, for, uh. Residential cluster and this one would be reducing. So there is one dimensional change there, but. It might be overly simplistic and I'd be hopeful that if we worked from someone from M A P C that we could come to, uh, you know. A way that's straightforward analysis of just sort of. Continued full build out, things will change. And then if we, um. If we try to do the sort of scenario of, you know. The, the three types of housing, uh, what the incremental difference would be. And the other thing I just want to say is I think it's important when we do look holistically at it. To choose some criteria from the master plan. And see, we, we talk a lot about affordable housing. That's certainly an important goal. But how other goals from the master plan might be advanced. Um, or neutral or not, or negatively impacted by the proposed changes or by no action. Thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Christina, are you ready to comment?
Yeah, I am actually. So I mean, just the company that's in the first, you know, first paragraph, it's, um, I have no idea how to say this, this Tischler. Beast, I say, however you say it. I mean, it looks like this is their. Their forte fiscal economic planning. So. Uh, there's people, there's consultants out there that do this work. So my question then was going to be to Chris and Sarah. Sarah, at the joint meeting, you mentioned it, Chris, I think you just mentioned it in passing. I just wanted to get an idea. You two are close to this. What do you see as the? The incorrect information? I think Sarah, you referenced it a few times in the. The incorrect information that's out there with residents. And I think, Chris, you just said it in passing. So. Could you just tell me what you perceive as the incorrect information out there? Just so we're. All on the same page because you're, we're speaking for the board at that time. I just want to make sure. We all are on the same page.
Uh, can I answer that, Ron?
Go ahead, Christine.
Oh, there are a lot of examples. Uh, the one that strikes me the most is a letter that was written into the cricket maybe a month ago. And, uh, it claimed that there'd be rampant development as a result of these zoning changes. And it would overwhelm the town. Uh, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there is no. Cause for anyone to think there's going to be rampant development as a result of these zoning changes. There may be some development as a result of special permits. Which we go through a rigorous review process with these impact studies as part of that process. But in fact, the, the fear right now is if we don't do anything. And, and Mary kind of offered an argument as to why maybe we shouldn't do anything. But then we're at risk for continued residential development. And a 40B, another 40B, or maybe this one gets withdrawn and we get another one. Because we're going to be at risk for 40Bs. We have to create 100 more units of affordable housing. One of the things that these zoning changes do allow is through these special permits. We could authorize, for example, a senior housing development. With 50 affordable units in it, if they're going to do it. So this is a mechanism in these zoning changes that actually addresses the problem of affordable housing. And a way of producing it, which is what we have to do. There is no, other than inclusionary zoning in the current zoning by law. There's really, which doesn't affect single family housing development. There is nothing in the zoning by law now that promotes affordable housing. We have to address that.
So can I just ask another question?
Part of the incorrect information, I think. Um, uh, sometimes, uh, we had a letter in today's packet about, um. The notion that, you know. Whether we've been effective at communicating and having everybody had a personal. Uh, postcard or something, no. But, uh, all of you know better than I that, um, this topic has been discussed. Um, for many years. And the bulk of the changes, um. Have been discussed for many years and, um, are really administrative and things that. Have been fixed. Some of them have come before town meeting before. The other thing is that in terms of the accessory dwelling units. The, the feeling that it will be rampant development, I also think is erroneous. And, um, currently accessory dwelling units, as Chris's memo points out, or we don't know how many there are and there's really no way to. To find out that, um, and given, I mean, personally, I have. An accessory dwelling unit, which is perfectly legal, that has. Nobody checking that I have a lease and all of those provisions we put in there. Um, but I would have, but we would have to in the future. So I see. Um, but I would have, but we would have to in the future. So I see. Um, the notion that we are, you know, um. Uh. Entirely, you know, letting everything by right, I think is erroneous because we have some significant. Controls on existing accessory dwelling units that tighten those rules and make some oversight with a. Um, a permit, for example, so um. Yeah, uh. That's. That's among the things that I've heard that I think are incorrect. So. I think I think Christina had a second comment too. Sorry.
All right. Go ahead, Christina.
I forgot. Oh, I was gonna ask a follow up. Yeah, um. If it comes to me, I'll send someone an email. Sorry.
Mary. phone. Did you have a, your hand is still up? Was that a residual?
Yes, I think I forgot what I was originally going to say, but um, so I I'm not sure what Chris was referring to, and I I don't think I ever recommended not doing anything, but um. I do have, um, he did mention about affordable housing and I I do have a great concern that. That really should be our focus. Um. You know, so much of this stuff will create. Affordable hu- I mean, um, market rate units, um, even with the ADUs that which will count as a dwelling unit. So. I. Would like us to focus on the things that we actually need. Um, I. You you know, we definitely need senior housing. I don't know that senior housing just by default is. Affordable. Um, that would have to be in the provisions as well. Um. And I guess I I. Except for the letter in the cricket, and I guess I didn't see that one about rampant development. I think. The concerns I've been hearing is the when you move things to by right, it becomes um, you know, the abutters and the neighbors don't have say in things that. They might like to um. You know, might have concerns. And so they they lose that and they lose any sort of appeal. Um, process with having things by right. So. I'm hearing more of that, that the, you know, it's i- an issue with by right and it's an issue with reducing some of the um. Setbacks and and lot requirements and and those types of things. So. I think they do still mayor at some discussion um, as we move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay.
So I remembered.
Christina, sorry.
Sorry. So it was to Chris and um, as your role with the Affordable Housing Trust. I think. You said with your first comment that if we sit back and do nothing, but we're not doing nothing, like you're actually involved in a great lot of work to. Create new units. So I feel. Like some of the things that Mary said in this and that and growing, but we are doing something, right? We're not sitting back. And so how many units if the proposed project goes through will be closer to our hundred?
I I can't answer it because I don't know. And and you're right, Christina, we are, the town is as a whole is trying to tackle this problem. When I said we're not doing anything, I'm talking about not doing anything zoning wise.
I understand, but that's creating more diversity. There's there's other ways besides letting the reins loose is, I think, my point, as Mary's had just mentioned, the by right. I think. Releasing it to by right is concerning for a lot of people. Um, and my finally comment, is there someone? Does anyone on the board know anyone at this Tischler? Say, can we see how much? Something from this company that actually did a similar project for Cambridge? Is that something that we can ask Sue to look into?
It was actually Somerville, and my guess is it's probably hundreds of thousands of, well, I don't know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for that study. And it was a very different study. They were looking at a zoning change in a district.
No, I understand, but I was wondering if someone there could just look at our document. A a fresh set of eyes. They're not based in Massachusetts. Just. To me, it would be. I I feel like M A P C has sometimes marching orders. And I would like a fresh, clean opinion instead of. You know, what's already out there, what their goals and objectives are.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Sue, any comments?
I'm I'm not familiar with this um, organization. I know that. You know, consultants come at. You know, hundreds of dollars an hour. Um, and. Think it would. There's a lot, I mean, other than just reviewing it. Reviewing a study and saying, are your assumptions valid? I mean, that might not be a lot of work, but I don't know what we get out of that. I think Chris has been. Pretty thorough and putting his methodology forward, and I don't think it's. I think it's, I think it's. Pretty, pretty solid. I don't think that um, I think we can look at what's happened around us in terms of. You know. What changes are made um, with the loosening of ADU bylaws, for example, I think there's lots of data out there on that. Um, and it isn't um, so. Um, so short. I don't know that firm. I'm sure that um. I could get a question out to them or others, but I I think that short of doing. A fifty, a hundred thousand plus study that you're not going to get. Um, much more than what Chris has offered, in my opinion. Even M A P C looking at it. Um, I think that would be, you would need to ask for a grant to do that. They don't just provide. Twenty hours worth to a s- a community just because they ask. It's all competitive ask.
Alright, thanks, Sue. Sarah, I'll take one more comment on this and then I'd like to move on. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I don't mean to have the last word here, but I still um. Was struggling to figure out what we do next and um. Uh, Sue's just said, well, you know, we may not have enough money in our coffers to get a significant, you know, do a significant study, so. So that we don't end up in September having this discussion again. Chris has put together, so I think getting comments on to Chris would be good. But perhaps also, I know, Mary, you've thought a lot about this. Perhaps a an actual um, table saying for every ten new residents. That are seniors. The incremental cost to Manchester, not just, so Chris has sort of done qual. Uh, qualitative measures, a few more ambulance calls. It was, I think, your words or something like that. Um, you know, what's the ti- I think it's a lot about the tipping point, right? If we have ten more seniors or if we have a hundred more seniors, if we have a thousand more, you know. Like, how do you, how do we um, e- accept in a qualitative way? Um, how do we quantify that? The per student cost is also a challenging thing because right now you can add um. A whole class of first graders and and not get to a tipping point um. Because they're down in numbers. So uh, I mean, I don't know if that's the right. But you know, they're down in numbers, so adding. Several more first graders or and you don't know if a family comes in, whether they're going to have first graders or they're going to have sixth graders or they're going to have special ed students. So. Um, maybe there's uh, ma- I mean, Mary, maybe you want to take a high-low estimate on these costs, whether they're qualitative or quantitative. And maybe could start there by saying what if, because those are the assumptions, right? What is the tipping point? Of a new water supply or a new uh, a school that's too big or too small or um, I guess too small. Um. And those are the tipping points of of growth and you know, that's always a challenge when you're planning is, does the last person in? Pay for the um incremental um, burden of everybody before and how big is that burden? And I think they're questions that are. Um. Difficult to answer. And then back to Chris's analysis is, the real question is. Each of these zoning changes, um, how many people do they really add anyway? Um, and he's making an argument that they don't add significant numbers. Maybe we need a high-low. Of zero to or five to, I mean, I don't know, per year, maybe we should try to take an actual. Guessimate, but um, absent that, it's kind of, all of it is. Is guesswork. So I'm still trying to figure out what our steps are besides giving Chris comments. So I'm sorry, I'm not helping, but.
Well. I think the main crux of this, from what I'm taking out of this, is that. All our administrative uh, changes that were, I think we need to get this out to the public that have no impact. I think only three pop changes, the um. ADUs, the senior housing and the clusters have impact. So I think the public needs to understand that. In Chris's table, uh, you know, if we release that or get that out there, that. These other changes of renumbering or definitions, they have no impact. And I think. That that word needs to get out. So um, my feeling is that uh, we can debate those three items, but um, I think on the main. Just of it, we should get that information out.
The non-conforming use uh, change Sarah Melish might argue has an impact. Uh, Mark Raski, of course, is going to argue that we're just making it comply with state law. So we can probably just leave that one alone. Knowing that we're gonna, we may get sued at some point. That's one strategy on that one.
Okay, um. Mary, did you have a rebuttal to Sarah's? Damn it. She had your hand up. No. You're on mute. Mary, we can't hear you.
Mary, on. Sorry, sorry. Um, I I think with the tipping point question, I think we've been talking about that for the last three to four years, and I think that is the key piece of. Information and data, and I think that um. You know, that can be engaging with the finance committee and. Police and fire and and all sorts of departments and staff in town. That would give good guidance on that kind of, you know, what's the rule of thumb with, you know, having to add one more police officer or one more ambulance or or? What's the cost here and what's the cost there? Um. I. I I would feel better that we are presenting things to residents kind of knowing that information. Um. I feel like sometimes I get pushback from residents saying, but how do you know these things? And and I don't have data to back it up. So I think that is a good path to go down.
Okay, um, Sarah, can you be quick? There, Melish. You have a comment? On mute. Can you not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I unmuted now?
Now you're good.
Uh, sorry, I was talking. Either Mr. Bron- Bronkowski is off base. Or we need to make a change because that is a nonstop. And we have gone to task with probably ten lawyers on this issue. And the Z P A is not willing. Go, continue to go. With with attorneys on case law. So that's my opinion.
Okay, we need to get to bottom of that. Thank you, Sarah. All right, so um, I think what we kind of uh, are saying by consensus is to get some comments to uh, to Chris, either via me or Sue Brown for transparency and we'll. Uh, discuss this at our next meeting. What the comments were, continue. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, thank you. Um, the next item we have are the uh blasting uh guidelines. Um. Need if I can figure this out. Are they up there? Can you see them? Anyone?
Yes, yes, you can see them.
Okay. So Sue, do you want to give us a an overview? I think what we want to do is kind of uh, look at these red items and kind of have a discussion on them. Um, and then we we try to move this forward. It's been in our uh, queue for a while now and um, we've gotten comments back from the fire chief and. Building inspector and I think. Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, we can still make changes to this, but we want to move this forward. Um. And we just want to get some consensus on these red items. Sue, I'll I'll give it, I'll uh, let you speak on this.
Yeah, so I think I think the important thing is that these are not zoning. Um. These are not zoning regulations. The zoning regulations have already been um, voted on. They're already. Part of our zoning. These are certain, these are just regulations or guidelines that. Were required to be developed by the planning board and as such, they can be changed by simply a planning board vote. So um, this, like the zoning, um, we shouldn't let the um, the perfect be the enemy of the good here. I think these are um, fairly straightforward. I think you can um. Talk about the changes that um, the few things that are in red that have, people have kind of questioned before and um, and go from there. I think it is good to get them on the books as we were required to do. Um, and then vote them up or down and and move on.
Okay, so uh, the first thing in red is under item one. Um. And we have um, at the applicant's expense language added. Anybody object to that? Okay. And then Sue, the last ones. Were this extent of survey. So um. You're asking the question, should an um, should an option be available to residents above beyond the two hundred and fifty feet as required by state? And dependent on a geol- geolog- geologist recommenda- geologist recommendation? And would the resident be responsible for paying if beyond two hundred and fifty feet? So I would open that up to discussion. Uh, Chief Leary uh, online with us?
I did see him. Although he may have left, I did tell him that he didn't have to be there. He did provide his comments. Oh, he's here.
I'm here. Chief, um, any comments on this uh, extent of surveys uh, with state law and uh, what we're trying to do here?
No, given that I'm not a blasting expert, I would defer to the. To the state and and whatever you folks. Feels appropriate beyond that. The the state regulations seem to have been in effect for a long time. Um, and based on a lot of science, so. I I don't have any knowledge or. Wherewithal to to go above and beyond what they already require.
So an option, um, Ron, is just to remove that and just leave it at the two hundred and fifty feet as required by the state regulations. Um, or if the board wants to say um. You know, that. The blaster will conduct a survey um, at the resident expense or um. I mean, I think it, I think it's open.
So um, any discussion by the board? Um, Mary phone?
Thank you. I. Can you, you can, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of questions on that one with the two hundred and fifty feet. I guess my question would be, what um, do some surrounding towns have as distance? I think some of them have more than two hundred and fifty feet, but I would just. Be curious if we took a poll of of some of our surrounding towns because um. Obviously. Within the state, there's the towns have varying different um, varying degrees of topography and. And then another question I ha- would have with that is, I know there was issues during the high school build. Um, and I'm wondering how far away the town needed to reimburse residents for some damage. So was that further than two hundred and fifty feet or not? So I think if we could get some of those questions answered, we'd have a clear understanding if the two fifty made sense.
So I, first of all, I would say that not many towns regulate beyond the state standards. I um, I think I have specifically checked with most of our neighbors, which do not. Um, so if we're looking for people. Close by to to coffee, I don't, I don't think it's available. I did not find any. Um. Um, now I've forgotten your other point.
The high school. Was the high school.
Oh, and I can't. Sarah, can?
The town had um. Had to reimburse a fair amount of residents because of structural damage, and I'm just wondering how how many. Had to reimburse a fair amount of residents because of structural damage, and I'm just wondering how how many feet that went out.
I was sure, yeah, um. I can't tell you how many feet it went out. It was um. They were pre uh, I don't think, first of all, I don't think the town reimbursed, just so you know, it's a district project, so the project. The um. Either the contractor reimbursed folks, not the town. It was be the district, the district, um and there were pre um. Construction ser- surveys mostly of um the uh fieldstone um foundations. And I believe everybody was given an option, uh a butters of a butters, I think would be was what my recollection, but uh but in terms of, but I can't recall what exactly what the criteria was. Um. So it was based on a pre- pre- pre-blasting sur- or we didn't blast, it was pre-construction. I don't believe it was had anything to do with blasting, actually. There was just a compaction in that case is often the the issue that causes the damage. So I don't believe it was blasting. It was, we have clay soils on that site. So not relevant to blasting.
So uh my comment, um just as the chief isn't a blasting expert, neither is the planning board, um my recommendation on this would be. To have a geologist recommend if it means to be beyond two hundred and fifty feet. I would think we should leave this in the hands of the expert uh with the rock that's being blasted and how contiguous it is and. I would, I would go with having the geologist recommend uh. If it's necessary to go beyond two hundred and fifty feet. Any other, uh Chris only?
Oh, I think you're right, Ron. I we're not experts in this. In fact, I think it's kind of crazy for the planning board to be creating these uh regulations anyway. I would say that depending on a uh geologist's recommendation is a great idea, and I think anyone beyond the two hundred and fifty feet. Should be notified, and if they want to be. Pay for their own survey, let that, that's fine, that's. Probably the best way to do it.
Thanks, Chris. Laura, Ken.
The state regulates health, safety and welfare, and I believe that the current uh regulations for blasting are what we should be um. What we should be using to govern blasting if we want to notify butters or residents within a certain area or occupants within a certain area. I have no problem with that. But um I worry that these may be arbitrary, two hundred and fifty feet, for instance, has more to do with the substrate than it does with any kind of. You know, uh number that can be determined by the planning board, but my 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 biggest takeaway is really the first item that it's governing. Um, projects by the size of the project and not by the size of the blasting. So if we feel that some butter notification or other communication is. A good idea, then it strikes me that we ought to be governing the size of the blasting, not the size of the project. A commercial structure that is one hundred thousand square feet or more. Or an individual structure with twenty housing units has nothing to do with. The size of the blasting, you could have one house that has a larger blasting than. Um, a larger commercial structure that may just be put on flat ground. So uh. I currently, I don't support it in its current form, but if we feel like it's important to notify, I'm fine with that, and then we should go back and revisit the um. The size of the blasting and not the size of the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. There, Christina.
So I, my hand was up for a bit here. Yes, I think that we should keep the part, and I think I'm just reiterating at this point, um. The geologist's recommendation. So I think it just depends where it is in our town. If it's in a highly dense. You know, people are sharing a lot of stone walls, the geologist is going to recommend maybe something else. So I think we just leave it at the geologist.
Thank you, Christina. Um, Sarah Melish.
I think we need to consider the impact on the SOB project. And whether it makes a difference. They're blasting forty feet off of Shingale.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um. Manchester by the C three.
Oh, that might be me, Ron.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, if it is, if it is, I just wanted to let Lauren know that um the first part of what's on that sheet. Um, is already in our bylaw, and that was passed against the planning board's um recommendation. So that is not up for question. That's that's something that's already been passed by the board. We're only have um. Uh, everything south below regulations um. Is what we can control. I agree, it should. It should have been based on the size of the blasting and not what type of. Project it is, whether it's multifamily or single family, but um. There we have it.
Thank you, Sue. So what all we can address is the items in red?
Uh, no, the um, Ron, if you, I can scroll up just a bit, everything starting a little more.
A butter notification?
A little more. So everything that the the regulations that I wrote are. Can you go up just a little more? Um, yes, so um. Yes, for projects that meet the criteria, criteria in article X. Um, twelve, everything below that are our regulations. The the language above that is what's already in the zoning. Um, it was put forth by a citizen's petition and was passed at town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion uh to accept these draft uh blasting guidelines with the following uh comments to keep. Under number one, keep at the applicant's expense in there. And then on the number six extent of surveys would be dependent on a geologic, geologist's recommendation. And um the resident would be responsible for paying if beyond two hundred and fifty feet.
Run. There was a couple more comments.
Oh, sorry.
I thought it was just about that one particular thing.
Sarah, sorry.
Um, I just want to comment on Sue's last uh. Comment, given that these are regulations that we can just adopt. Um, can't we add um additional uh the the point around size of project? Um. At size of ledge removal as the trigger in addition to that, I I I agree, we can't take out what the citizen petition had, but why can't we um add to it based on what Laura said? Is there any reason we can't?
Um, I. Don't know that. That that's a great question. Um. It it is, I mean, it makes more sense. I mean, it's already controlled by the state, but if you want the same criteria to also apply to any single family or other. Project, it makes, it seems reasonable to me that you could. Require it, but I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, but so we would add a third criteria, which is any um. Uh, any struck, any blasting of more than X. Uh cubic yards, whatever that X is. Um. So that would be um.
And do we know what that X would be?
Oh, but we'd have to ask somebody, but um I think to Laura's point. Um, I think we can, um, I mean, if. Already are. It seems to me that that's the logical um. Logical thing to add here.
I guess it is. If we were, I think we should keep in mind that the board didn't in the beginning think that this was in their purview anyway, so I wonder why we would want to even increase the. What we're trying to regulate when we didn't feel like we needed to regulate this at all.
May I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, Sarah, thanks for the uh. Comment, I, that would make me feel. Marginally better about this document because I think it would be. Fairer and more effective if we do have a third clause in there that governs the size and what the cubic yard is. I don't know either. All of this stuff in here is not, you know, percolate and um. Uh, acid rock drainage, none of that is material that the planning board is going to be able to review, but um asking a geologist or um. A geotechnical engineer for what that kind of. Trigger of cubic. Rock that might have an impact. I think that would be the best way to do it, so we get expert advice on that, and I would love to have a geotechnical engineer review this whole document. I do worry about um. Putting in things that are are not effective.
And I, and just to be clear, I have had a blasting um consultant to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
But but I, yeah, but but we weren't, I didn't ask the question.
Right.
You know, what is the trigger?
Yeah, so if we could get a third clause in there that says X cubic feet of rock, you know, and that was the trigger as recommended by a geotechnical engineer, then or blasting expert, then um I think it would be a stronger document and more protective.
You are, um Christina.
Um, I agree with you both. I'm thinking that. The that wording, number one, and number two is just reiterating what we passed at town meeting. Adding to that, I think it needs to go back, that portion may need to go back to town meeting. This is just reiterating what the bylaw says.
Correct, that's not the cri- that's not, that is just to give, yeah, that's just to give context to folks.
So I don't know if we can just add that in the regulations is my point. Maybe I I don't think we can. The regulations are just explaining what has to be done in these particular circumstances. I don't know if we can change the circumstances. Um, but my question was, and I think Sue and I were just going back and forth on this, um was the twenty-four hours? And my concern was if someone gave notice on a Sunday, could they blast on a Monday? So I think Sue came up with some good language for that. And then with the percolate. I just in in maybe not having to change or vote, if we just have a catch-all phrase, if the DEP or the EPA comes up with something that we shouldn't use. Just a sentencing. Or anything else that. The government, you know, Masco or federal government says should not be used in blasting. Do you see my notes? Does that make sense?
So. It sounds like there's some still issues with this document as written. I'm I'm suggesting we form a subcommittee to rewrite this.
Oh, I think it was okay. I think Sue made a great suggestion, and I think if Sue could just. Word another one, this doesn't have to be, I'm not, yeah, I think it's great. I think we should get it gone. And I think if we need to change, add three later, if they're not comfortable voting on it, then let's add three and wait, but. These were just, I think, minor. I can even take out the catch-all, and I think the forty-eight hours that Sue wrote was fine. I'm not trying to hold this up.
That's one point, but then there was another point about the size of the blasting, so I'm. I'm, what's what we could, what's the pleasure of the board on this? Like to move forward and vote this through, or we would like to send it back to uh for rework? Because the rework would require, I guess, involving a geotech and getting that number of cubic yards.
Could Alan answer that question if that needs to go to town meeting? Yeah, I think he's on. If we added a third criteria, the changes with the bylaw reads, and we add that in the regulation.
I don't think so, but um, I don't think so. Laura?
Well, I'm here, but I don't know the answer. Um, Mary was suggesting, let her Alan could answer the question, or if we need to go back and get legal counsel.
That was Christine, that was me.
Oh, beg your pardon, sorry, Christina.
Alan, are you on? Guess not. Um. Man Harrison, maybe you have an answer for us?
I I don't have an answer, but Alan asked me to send him a text if something came up that he should be involved in, and I have just done so.
Okay. He always likes to escape.
And I will remind folks that. You can vote on this today as is or with the changes that we've discussed, and you could revote it the next time if we find additional information. This is a document that you are in control of.
I'd like to move it if we could, um only because it's been sitting around for a couple of years here, so um. I like the idea of maybe we we add Laura's comments subsequently.
So Alan is on, and he may be able to, if you rephrase the question, maybe he can. Respond.
Christina, you want to rephrase your question?
Oh, sure, so um. Ron, can you put the on the screen? Sorry. So Alan, I believe at last fall town meeting, we voted on some blasting regulations and. Number one and number two are the criteria that we voted on at town meeting. The board would like to add a third criteria. Can we do that in within the regulations? But that would not be reflective in the bylaw. We would need to go back to town meeting to add a third criteria. Is that correct?
You would have to go back to town meeting to change the bylaw, yes.
And so adding a third criteria in the regulation would have no effect unless it was in the bylaw.
Well, I I wasn't on for the beginning of this discussion, so I'm not quite sure where you are.
So we passed a bylaw, I believe it was two meetings, town meetings ago, and now we're drafting regulations for the blasting. And um the board is not comfortable and would like to add a third criteria. That incorporates a size of the blasting, not a particular. Instance such as commercial um and one thousand square feet, but maybe just a unit number of blasting versus a. Use.
So you're you're changing your regulations, but not the bylaw?
Um, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Yes, and so just to be clear, these are guidelines, but. So can we include in our guidelines a further criteria?
In addition to the criteria that are in the bylaw?
In addition to the two, yes.
Well, I really, I really can't answer that without looking at the bylaw and the proposed guidelines side by side. Um. You know, if 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 the. If the proposed guidelines are consistent with the bylaw, maybe. If they're inconsistent with the bylaw, no. But I, to give you a real answer, I'd have to look at them carefully and and study the issue that you're you are raising.
Sarah?
Um, I I was just trying to find it. Um, I don't have it right at my fingertips. I am. Pretty sure. That the town meeting vote was to authorize the planning board to draft blasting regulations to do the in the following ways, as opposed. So I think we need to know what the what we are charged with do, what the article was on town meeting floor.
Sarah, it's right there. It's right, it's it's, that is it verbatim. That is the article. Of twelve, right there.
What what matters is not the article, what matters is the motion that was made on town meeting floor.
Right, but but. And we're mad, we are amending the uh bylaw, so we probably can't add a third. I think I'm agreeing with Sue now. We probably can't add a third, but we should just double check that.
Yeah, I I without. More information, I can't give you an answer from my perspective.
So.
Item proposal on. Uh, I'll I'll make a motion.
Well, like Chris, let me, like, add some more comments from Chris, and then we'll move move it.
Actually, I was gonna do what Sarah was about to do, I think. I'd like to move that we um. We accept these blasting guidelines with the changes that are in this document that you outlined, Ron. Uh, with the understanding that at a subsequent meeting, we're going to amend these regulations further.
So just a friendly, um, just to be a little more specific, uh. I think. We wanted to on the. we wanted to, on the, at the applicant's expense, that's kind of a no brainer. I think that's fine. But I think we want to talk about, and I think the board is in agreement that it would, the extent would be dependent on a geologist's recommendation.
Yeah, geologist, you're a technical engineer, yes.
Okay, so that's what your, that's what your motion is, okay.
I would say and change the, the, the number of days or hours to make sure that something couldn't come in on a Friday, Friday.
Business day.
Gail, do you have all that? Because it's a little fuzzy to me. Where is the number of hours listed? It's not in red here.
Oh, that, Ron, can you not see the comments on the side?
Oh, okay. Okay, I see that. Where is that? Okay, that's in this number five. Okay, so I just want to make sure Gail is good with what we're saying and it's not clear as mud and
I, I have, I have most of it. I will listen to it and it's not muddy. It's pretty well spoken and res spoken.
Right, so is there a second on Chris's mo- motion with the friendly amendments?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say I'm okay with leaving out my second comment about the catchall statement, so that's it. But as long as the 24 hours is changed, I'm good. Yeah.
Yep, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Miss, Miss Creighton.
Yes.
Miss Delicio?
Yes.
Miss Foley?
Yes.
Mister Only?
Yes.
Miss Tenny?
No.
No, and the chair votes yes, so it's five, one. To accept. Okay, thank you. Planning Board input to the ZBA on the 40B. And Sarah has joined, Sarah Melish has joined us to address waiver requests. This is something, I think the ZBA wants the, some planning board comments on the 40B. And I'll open the discussion to Sarah. And you're on mute. Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks. So I received an email from member of planning board that raises concern that we had not requested input from the planning board. The 40B process is something that is not normal for, to our town. We've been working on it since October of 2021. We have had input from numerous boards. Um, we did not expect that we needed to make a request on the silver platter to a specific board. Um, we have limited opportunities to formulate the project. Um, there's obviously issues with egress, which we hope to address. The, we've had peer reviewers with respect to the architectural design. We've had peer reviewers with respect to the storm, stormage drainage. Um, and we would look forward to any im- input. The planning board would like to provide on additional areas. Our final public hearing is on July 27th, 2022. We cannot accept additional public comment after that date and time, unless we receive an extension. Thank you.
Okay, so my, my comments is the, we put together at the beginning of this, the planning board's concerns in a letter to the select board. Um, I think a lot of them are still valid. Um, I'm wondering if the board would maybe want to push that letter out to the ZBA and anything additional would be beyond that, what, what's in that letter, I'd be, I think the board should listen to and agree to. Other than that, I know the ZBA has had peer reviews, which is what the planning would have, board would have done and has gotten expert advice. Which is the same thing we would have done on a special permit application, so I don't think you've, you're, you know, you're lacking of concerns. But I will throw this discussion open to any member of the board. I'll start, anybody want to comment on this? Christina?
Yeah, I'm trying to raise my hand and I'm you, am I, I'm in it? Okay, yeah, no, I think taking that letter is a great starting period, starting point. I think the project has changed a bit, so I think we need to make sure it's consistent with the current project. But it is, it's part of the, you know, the 40B process that we have something on the record from the planning board. So I think we'd be remiss if we didn't submit something and make sure it was on the record. Even if we regurgitate what we sent to the ZBA, but I think we, I'm sorry, the select board, but I think we need to take a look at it and make sure it's still factually correct. I do know the project has changed a bit.
Mary Foley?
Yeah, I guess I would just say it, it does make sense to review the letter as the, as, as the planning board and to, you know, add or delete anything we need to, and then we submit it to the ZBA. I think that makes sense.
So here's my suggestion. I will post the letter in, on our, I'll let everybody know, I'll find, I'll dig out the letter, I'll post it to SharePoint. And we can make comments to Sue on any comments we want to make. I think I'll take, since the time is short, I'll take those comments and kind of go through them and push them on to Sarah's group, the BBA, unless you want to bring it up before the board again at our next meeting. But it looks like we have until the 27th to push them through, and my thought was to cancel next meeting, but we can meet next week. Uh, July 11th, but I know that we like to
So I think we still have the 25th to look at it and vote on it and send it over. I think we should vote on it and send it to the ZVA.
Sarah, would that, Sarah Melish, would that be okay if we voted on the 25th and got it to you that night, or the 26th?
Yes, I, I think that our challenge is that we can't accept anything that was dealt with through the lip. Because that was not part of our public hearing. So everything we can receive that's part of our public hearing, we need to receive. And our final public hearing is on July 27th. So if we get it Monday for that, that's fine.
Okay, here's what I'll do. I'll put the, the select board letter in our packet meeting for the 25th. And we'll have a discussion then, and hopefully you guys will have a chance to review it. You know, it's a month, so we should be able to review it in a month, so. Sound good to everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. We, we didn't mean to neglect you.
Thanks.
Okay.
No, it's, it, this is a challenge and it's
Sarah, we understand, you know, we, we have sympathy for you and your group.
It's, it's pro developer, not pro town.
Understand, we have our own. Okay, thank you all. Next up, we're running a little late update on the LCD overlay district study. Sue, did you want to? You asked for this?
I did not ask for this, did I? I did want to, I just did want to let you all know, and this is in my planner's report, that Chris, Only, Mary, Foley and I met and provided some further guidance to MAPC. I did have a discussion with MAPC today and they're going to try to turn that around very quickly. He thought what we had was pretty straightforward. He did, he may have some questions about how to preserve, how to um, have different requirements for an area that's already disturbed, but he's gonna see what he can come up with. Pass that back to us, and then I hope that the board will look at it in its entirety and and just vote to accept it. Again, even if it's not something that we intend to bring forward. It will be a tool that we have, that we could change in part or in whole. If we decide to do something in the future with an overlay district, so I do think it provides a framework and I think the design guidelines are quite good, so. Um, we hope to have something definitely before next meeting. But I will, I will share it as soon as I receive it, so. And you, and, and my report, I can get that in front of me, if you, those are the things that, those are the main points, I think, that we asked to to have changed in the draft regulations. I'm happy to.
Sarah, is that, you have your hand up, or is that from our last discussion?
No, this is new.
New?
So the challenge we've had with the SLB development is that the parcel is environmentally sensitive. And we, given that, it seems appropriate to determine whether parcel of pipeline road is similarly environmentally protected, and we need to reconsider whether it should be part of the SLB. It's up to you guys, but you know, it's, we wouldn't have SLB if that parcel wasn't in the LCD.
Well, that was before us.
Well, town voted on, I don't know if they knew what they were doing. Not your, you know, town voted, I don't know.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right, thanks Sue. Any other comments on that? We'll, we'll await your information. And could you give us a parking study update?
Yeah, sure. And I, and I just, Sarah had asked for me to put it in a, a written framework, which I will try to keep up with going forward. So I did just finish that at 6:00 PM. Um, as I was finishing up another meeting, so that's new, but basically this, the framework that I uploaded in SharePoint will kind of remind you regularly what are the steps and the tasks involved and where we are in that process. So to, to date, we've really just, just started and they've done their background work, they've done the site visit, they've trained the volunteers, and we had our first data collection day at the end of May. We had volunteers from the bike and pedestrian committee, from the downtown improvement committee, and some residents at, at large. Which was, which was great. And we've, they've input the data. They haven't started to make any conclusions yet because they really want to compare it to the next day that we have. But he did share that overall, one thing that showed that there is about 30 to 40% occupancy of on-street parking the day that we did it. So what we really need to get down to is where was it a lot less than that? Where was it greater? And that's the type of information that we will be sharing. So we're just getting started. We do need to choose a date for the second data collection day, which we said would be a sunny Saturday in July. Um, I would love to ask for some volunteers from the planning board to take part. And I'll be going back to the folks that did it earlier because they all said that they enjoyed it and, and would be doing it again too, but I think it's it's great to, to, to share the, to share the work. So I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on a Saturday in July that you'd be willing to give up for a couple hours to count cars.
Any comments from the board, Christina?
Well, I actually offered before, but was unable to. So the only date that I cannot do it in July is obviously the 4th of July weekend, and then the 23rd. So I'm open besides those dates.
Have you said a date, Sue?
Uh, no, I would like to, like to, to recommend a date, and, and because we want it to be, to be a sunny Saturday. And obviously we'll, if we choose it now, we, we're not guaranteed of what the weather will be, so we'll, we should select a couple. And hopefully we won't have to go into August or make any another, other adjustment, but if we still think that Saturday is the busiest day and we want to get the data from those days. I'm happy to.
How about the 16th and the 30th?
That works for me. I can ask, yeah. Does anyone think that the 30th is too late, or is that, do we think that's okay?
Laura?
Uh, I could potentially help on the morning of the 16th, not available on the 30th.
The 9th and the 16th work too. It's just the 23rd is bad.
I can't do the 9th, but I could do the morning of 16th.
So maybe let's just stick with the 16th and the 30th.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, planner's report, Sue, any?
Uh, let me get that in front of me. So we've covered the downtown parking study, the LCD overlay district and the blasting guidelines. So the only other things on my report were the downtown recovery grants, we're still searching for funding for a place making plan and also for off-season events. So we do have grants out there and we're waiting to hear. So we're just keeping our fingers crossed. I did want to report that because the, the planning boards did put forth a recommendation on the Halloran Trust parcel to support the town taking that. I wanted to let the um, the board know that, that subsequently because of the, because of it going public to abutting landowners purchased that, so we will not be moving forward with that taking. Um, good news, the open space and recreation plan has been approved by the state, and I'm just awaiting that final document. Um, and the, and the formal statement of approval. So that will, that will be valid for seven years and will be eligible for funding for certain open space and recreation acquisitions and improvements of that.
Thank you, Sue. Any comments? Okay, our next item, which we, we alluded to earlier in our meeting, the special fall town meeting date. The select board has given us two dates to consider, October 24th, and then today I found out November 14th. Just any discussion on a preferred date by us that we can recommend to the select board. I'm open, personally, I'm open for either date. Christina?
Oh, actually, it was just a backup question. I, just a quick question for Sue. Was the master plan ever approved by the state?
Um, no, but the state does not approve master plans. They're approved by just the, the planning boards. They're accepted and adopted by planning boards.
Okay, great. And then I guess my preference would be the October. I think Alan's gonna chime in. I think there was an email that the second date is actually a holiday weekend. The Friday, so that Monday meeting might be tricky.
Any, any other board members with concerns or restrictions on either date? Or preference, to Sarah Creighton?
Um, I guess my only comment was the earlier one that, you know, maybe a little more time would be helpful for. I guess my only comment was the earlier one that, you know, maybe a little more time would be helpful for, um, preparing. And it would be, uh, do we know, maybe Anne or Becky, do you foresee the board select, the select board having articles?
Becky?
We have not discussed that at this point beyond what was already brought forward previously.
Okay, so we have Christina for October twenty-fourth, Sarah for November fourteenth, and I was either way. Laura Tenney?
Well, contrary to what I said about preferring the later date before, I tend to agree with Christina that coupling it with a holiday weekend is not, not a great plan. So sticking with the October date makes more sense to me.
Okay, Chris or Mary? Mary?
Um, I'm fine with either date. I agree with pushing it out as far as possible for the work that we need to do. But then I also do not think it's great to have it on a holiday weekend. So maybe the select board could come up with another date.
Is that possible, Rebecca or?
Um, there are a lot of factors that have gone into trying to come up with these two dates. Alan, thoughts on that?
Ron?
Yes, right now.
Thank you. Well, there are, there are a number of complications with, with a lot of dates in the fall. If we wanted to have it later than October twenty-first, twenty-fourth, that would push it into October thirty-first, which is of course Halloween. Uh, that's gonna interfere with attendance. After October twenty-fourth, we have, the town clerk has the, the state and national election coming up on November eighth, which makes the dates leading up to that difficult for her because she has to offer early voting. As several people have mentioned, the weekend, the, the weekend before the fourteenth, because of Veterans Day, which falls on November eleventh, the Friday, is a long weekend. So people may be extending their long weekend into the fourteenth. Personally, I think that the, the, the best of several bad alternatives is probably October twenty-fourth, which I think, you know, gives you a fair amount of time, starting after Labor Day, to conduct workshops and, and engage the public. And given the, the, the choices in November, that seems like the preferable one. But that's just my opinion.
Um, who has not, Rebecca?
Um, I, I know it's going to be really difficult to get everybody. And I think that we're just going to have to do our best to get as many as we're able.
Okay, so Chris, only any comment?
I kind of like the twenty-fourth. I think probably it's better to have a tighter schedule. So we, this is more kind of compact interest in this thing. And, and frankly, I just didn't get it over with. We can enjoy our November.
Interesting.
A thumbs up from Sarah.
All right. So I think the consensus of the board, the message back to you, Rebecca and Alan, is the twenty-fourth.
Are, are there any planning board members who cannot make the twenty-fourth?
I guess at this time, I don't see anyone not making it.
I, I, I talked with Gary Gilbert at the party for Eli Bowling and I, I think he had some travel plans in the first half of October. So I thought the twenty-fourth, I think the twenty-fourth works for him too.
And sorry about less time for you all. I know you've got a lot to do.
Hey, you had a lot to do when it was in June. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So I have this hybrid meetings on the agenda. I am thinking July twenty-fifth to start meeting back at Town Hall. That's kind of what I'm thinking, although I still need to go for some training on how that runs. Maybe Becky, I know you guys have met together now. Is it pretty seamless?
Really easy. Yeah, I mean, they, they, sixteen twenty-three studios comes in and, and they handle everything. Sue Croft knows how to do things as well. It's been pretty seamless to use.
Would they be broadcasting a planning board meeting now? I mean, would they be in? I, I know you, you guys, but I don't know if they.
Um, I, I don't know if you have to have them do that. I don't know that.
Okay. I'll circle back with Sue Croft on that. I just wanted to bring that up to, so we can start thinking about meeting together again.
Ron, I'm sorry to interrupt. One more on that though, but it's easy enough to Zoom and you don't all have to be there. There will be some different guidelines coming from the state the middle of, of July as to whether you, you have to have forum in person or not. But Sue and Greg know that. Sue Croft, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so now a little painful for me as the approval of our regular meeting minutes. We're way behind and again, I did not see any posted in our meeting packet. So it's an ongoing issue. I'm aware of it. Town's aware of it. I just have no other comments on that right now. We're trying to work on it, get it, get this resolved. But it, it's been a problem.
So I know when I listen to, I'm sorry, Ron.
Christina?
I'm sorry. When I listen to the other meetings, there's an option for a transcript. I mean, is that better than nothing at this point? Can we download the transcript from YouTube and put it out there?
A lot of, a lot of talking.
It does it? I mean, it's, I don't know. I, maybe someone at the town can look into it.
Okay, Sue?
Um, I would note that Sarah and I have worked and we found minutes through April. I forget, through April, pretty much. And it is an option. I don't, I can't guarantee that they're the, the final drafts, but you could put them up as drafts at this point if we're not, if they're not final, then no harm, no foul, but at least something is up there. So I think you might want to consider doing that.
Well, I think what we should, if you don't mind, I think we should take those drafts and put them on the, um, meeting for the next, right now, we should create a meeting folder for the next meeting and put those on and recognize that it's a big lift to review six minutes at the next minute. But if we look at them in advance, use track changes to, to meta, to edit them. If we get them up, you know, the next day or so, Sue, then I think we can at least have enough time to review them, which is often the problem too. We're not getting them. That's, the other thing is that I have looked through my notes and have detailed notes on the public hearing from May fifteenth, which I will try to get in as draft minutes as well as the, if you recall, the May twenty-third meeting. Not, Laura, you weren't there, but we did a table of all the motions and I think we can just make those into minutes. So that's two additional ones that I will put in a folder for our next meeting. So if you make that folder and then maybe move the draft minutes in there and we'll all take it as homework to review them and we'll have at least a number of them. But we can, we can certainly look into the transcript. I think what you'll find, because I'm on another board, that one, we use closed caption because someone's hearing impaired. And, you know, there's a fair bit of garble, you know? It, it, the concern I have with that, but maybe it's better than nothing, to your point Christina, is that it creates things that are nonsense sometimes that, so, but we could certainly try it and see if it will, what it will do. Maybe you can at least cut it out. We could just take action minutes and just cut the, to anything that says motion. So that's an idea.
Sarah, on another point, have the minutes re-approved? Have they been posted on the website? You know that?
Sue has.
So no, they haven't. So that's the, the problem. So when I, the ones that I said when we, I said we've, we found everything through April. Those in fact have all been approved, but I don't know if the drafts that I have were the finals, were what was approved with, with any recommended changes. I think some of them maybe, but I don't know that, I don't know. I just don't know because I don't have, these are what we took off SharePoint. They were in the folders for that day's meeting. So if anything got changed, then I don't have those changes. Sometimes there were multiple documents and we could kind of see where things were changed. So all of the, through April actually have been approved, but I just don't know the ones that, I don't know if the file that I have is what was, has the changes in it.
So just on, on the process, Sue, the posting, so you say, go ahead and you, does Ugo post them or does Tiffany, Marletter post?
No, no, no. The clerk posts them. That is her job. So I can have them posted as draft until we determine if they are in fact the finals. Or you could, if you have it in you, you could take a look and see if all of your recommendations were made. I'm sorry. And, and, and either make them or, or not, or we could post them as drafts. It's a lot of work for everyone to reread and remember. But I know, for example, Laura said she would send some dirt for a, you know, in an email. So I don't have the benefit of checking to see if all those made it into that draft. So we have them through April. I would suggest you at least put them up as a draft and then we can do some further work to make sure that whether or not they're the finals.
So I think the only person who can do that is you or Gail. I mean, we're, I don't think we're equipped to do, I'm not sure who, who is gonna do that other than, right now, other than us.
Yeah, I can post, I can send them to the, I can send them to the clerk to dra, draft, post as drafts. I just wanted you to recognize what, what, I think it's the board's decision on whether they want them up there as a draft.
I think we should. We're way behind. I mean, that's my opinion. Anyone else object to putting up draft minutes?
No, but we also, let's all make a note. Sue, if Sue and I can get them up, what we have as drafts for our next meeting, so I'll know that they're there and that they're gonna need, we're gonna have to approve them at our next meeting. So take, make a note to, to have a couple hours to slog through those. Maybe we could even each take one. You know, since there are sort of five or six people could, we could at least kind of divide and conquer in terms of the edits in particular. Some of them are pretty rough. So maybe we could do it that way. People could, if people's gonna, are going to, you know, use the SharePoint, track changes and just edit them right there. So we can all see.
And you put out a table and assign each person a minute? I think that would be great. It's a good idea. Should have a burden.
My hand is up, but it's really light. It matches. I'm sorry. I think, I just wanted to say thank you, Sarah, for putting those minutes in one folder. So an idea was maybe just if you start to do it, maybe just put your name in the file and then we can erase it later if you, you're gonna take on that meeting minutes. But will you put all the ones that we need to look at in one folder? Is that what you're going to do?
I think we're gonna put them in the meeting folder for the next meeting, just the way we have to. That way.
Yes, I can do that. I've also put in a chart, a matrix that says what, at what date they were approved. So I will, and whether or not they're posted. So you'll have all that information.
All right.
Ron, could I say something to Gail?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I would offer to help. Except the forty B meeting minutes are extremely challenging because of the legal implications of everything that's discussed. So I, I would offer to help and I will after forty days.
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I ask one other question? That is, who's handling correspondence in the interim right now? Is that Sue or Gail? And Sue, whichever it is, can you make sure the website is appropriately updated for the interim?
I don't typically get correspondence.
I'll, I'll follow up on that because I'm in Town Hall on Tuesdays and Thursdays and I've been spending four hours. So I'll follow up and I think Greg's new assistant, Debbie Powers, is probably able to help us a little bit too.
One thing, Gail, I, I would like, or Sue, is any applications that come in. I'd like to know, you know, as soon as possible, especially if we're thinking of possibly postponing or canceling a meeting during the summer. If there's nothing really pending.
Yeah, the town clerk is very good about copying whatever needs to be copied.
I never get a copy. That usually comes from Sharon. So I need to.
I'll, I'll let the town clerk.
Change that, jump that. Okay.
Yeah, Sue, I can do that tomorrow when I'm in Town Hall because I'll ask her to add my name to the planning board immediate, you know, when she takes an application and stamps it in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that. That's easy enough to do. And I'll check the mailbox regularly when I'm in there.
You, Gail.
I can do, I can do some of those things.
Okay.
And I'll check Sharon's desk. She did indicate she was gonna be out probably two weeks.
All right, I know it's late. Just a quick update on the Water Resource Committee. Just a little update on the Hamilton Road. Apparently, they, their order of conditions expired and they'll have to file a new notice of intent. So that all may, as funding has, has expired, that whole thing may need to be voted on again. So stay tuned on that one. The, so the, the Water Cease Resource Committee, as I mentioned earlier, will be updating the select board on July fifth. They're also producing a flyer handout, which I think is gonna go with the tax bills, although I'm not sure yet. And then we've also looked at some new Board of Health regulations, but that's been referred for peer review by engineers. I know, Mary, you want to have for our next agenda, the master plan maps, correct? We wanted to bring that up. So I will put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, I was just asking because I know we've never actually, the master plan is formalized, but we haven't, it's still in draft form. It hasn't been formatted and we don't have the maps. And then once that gets done, then we need to submit it to D H C D. So none of that's been done yet.
Understood. What's the board's feeling about two meetings in July?
Ron, I'm so sorry. I can't get my hand darker. I don't think you could see it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to back up with the Chabaco Road. So I think the order of conditions, there was two. There was the town and then the state and they did not coincide. Yeah, but they revoted them last week. So they're, yeah, the Concom voted it. So it went through. So that's done.
Steve, Dan, do you have any insight in that? I see you have any here now.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Christine, you're absolutely right. The Concom unanimously voted to approve the pay.
to, uh, approve the paving of Chabaco Road, um, including where it's very close to our reservoir, and, um, I can't say with any certainty, but I think there's a pretty high probability that a, a sufficient number of uh, butters in the town of Hamilton are going to file an appeal, most likely under the Wetlands Protection Act directly to the DEP. That would be in the next two days.
Thank you, Steve. So that thing did go through, okay. Um, back to the meeting schedule, uh, we've got two meetings in July. Any, uh, anybody feel the need to meet both times in July? I'm, uh, they're based it on applications that come in, um, but, um, I know, uh, we've been working hard and, uh, my, my thought was to have meeting July twenty-fifth. But if there's objections, I will have the both meetings. And I'll base it on any applications that come in in the next two weeks. Any thoughts? Okay, stay tuned.
When we even joined in July is good.
Sounds good.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, Sarah, sorry.
All right. I have three, I have three. I have three quick things. Maybe one of them's not quick, sorry. Um, there, uh, I mentioned this before, there are print copies of the, uh, final motions that we voted, if, instead of printing out a large volume of paper, there should be a copy for everyone at Town Hall in the, um, mailbox area. So, um, if you haven't picked one up, go, you can go pick it up. Um, the second thing is, um, I would like to, um, propose that we think a little bit strategically about what our highest priorities are at the board. Um, we've been spending an extraordinary amount of time on the, um, zoning, so our time allocation would indicate that it's our priority, but maybe it's not. It may, or, um, so what other, uh, pri, so not, we don't have to decide that tonight, but just maybe think a little bit about it and run, maybe we could run a, a short, um, brainstorming exercise with some, uh, tools for, you know, voting about what those priorities would be. Um, at some point in the fall, perhaps, um, so that our time allocation and the allocation of Sue's time in particular, as our support is aligned, um, to our priorities. Um, so that's just something to think about in the future. Um, and then the third thing, eh, on my list, um, sorry, I'm just putting those out as opinions, and you can, I don't know. The third thing that I do have a question about, and Ron, you and I talked about this, but um, the situation on C Street, um, I know we are not the enforcement officer. Um, this is, um, Spyrock Hill, um, backside of the Spyrock Hill, what was presented to us as an A and R, and, um, I rode by there today, so it's not on the agenda. I think it's okay to bring it up. And that is that, um, I know the building inspector is the enforcement agent there, but, um, I went and looked at that, and, um, I don't believe that the plan that we had for a driveway coincides with the on-the-ground topography. The topography there is shown as two-foot increments, and the, uh, topography on the ground is, uh, you know, much more variable than that, and, um, it's my, I have a great concern that there, that the topogra, the, the special permit required for, um, removal of ledge will be triggered, but it will only be triggered after the ledge is removed, which sort of defeats the purpose of the bylaw with, and so I don't know what, in, in addition, um, a curb cut will be made before a curb cut application has been received. Um, so I don't know how we deal with this, because it doesn't really do much good to have a bylaw that only gets triggered by the building inspector after the event has occurred. So how do we deal with that? Um, or.
Well, we won't get a building permit if he puts a curb cutting without approval.
But that, we'll still have a curb cut, and we'll still have a blasted side of the hill. So the point is, there should be a review in advance of the, um, demolition, and I, I feel really strongly that this, um, plan that we, we don't, we don't have, we, we, the plan was just a, a illustration to illustrate access, but when I look at the plan, and when I look at what's out there, I see two different things. I see a, a starting height of about three feet, as opposed to a starting feet of right at the road. So, um, I guess maybe I'm offering to maybe go talk to the building inspector and state my opinion, which I will do in, whether I speak for the board or for myself, but I'd like to be able to speak for the board that we have concerns.
Great, thank you, Mary.
I agree with your concern, Sarah, um, and I, I would hope that our enforcement officer is able to be preemptive, if that's using the right word, um, in a situation like this, um, so that there's not all sorts of fallout from that, right? I mean, there, he's obviously clear-cutting with an intention to do something, and I think kind of like on Walker Road, I think they have to, you know, the first bulldozer that comes in, there has to be a decent assist to that happening, um, obviously, because it had, could have huge impacts on neighbors if we haven't gone through any kind of, you know, water plan or anything like that, so hopefully that can happen. And I just wanted to also comment on your, um, you know, kind of the goals of the planning board. We used to as a board, and maybe we can, um, start this again, is have yearly goal-setting sessions, sometimes as a retreat, um, and have a list of, of three or four or five top priorities that we wanted to accomplish for the year. So I hope we can bring that back.
Sounds good. I will schedule a retreat. COVID has kept us from that in the past, but I think we can do that. Um, I did, just FYI, um, I did write the building inspector, um, if you had any insight into the, uh, clearing activity that was going on, um, he says clearing of trees would not be a zoning issue. I'm not sure who the tree warden is, but it's worth notifying him. That was his response on that. Regarding that A and R, um, my plan is, and I've been in contact with Town Council on, uh, on this, uh, they plan to, uh, be at our meeting when this application gets heard again, so we will have the benefit of Town Council. Just moving, just for information. Um, Sarah, Laura, I haven't heard from you.
Christina had her hand up first, uh, only Christina.
I can't change it until I'm out, so I apologize. So, um, yes, I was gonna bring up the retreat, but the second thing, as, and I don't think that we should overlook this, is Ron, when you said you can't get a building permit unless there's a curb cut application, but that's false, and that was one of our early on concerns, that you absolutely can get a building permit without the curb cut, so I, I think we do need to revisit that and rethink the order of how we do things. I mean, there's a project going on at school, and, um, I think it's Nanny Winslow's old home, that there, it's beautiful, but I believe in the plans, they're talking about accessing it through the side street, and the house is almost done, so no, the building inspector does give out building permits without the curb cut application, so.
I'll, I'll check back with Paul on that, but I thought that wasn't possible, but. Okay.
And I think that was one of our concerns before. I mean, that we don't have any input, and the curb cut kind of needs to be where it is, because the project is built and done, so. All right, that's all I have to say.
Laura.
Uh, on the retreat, sounds great. I'd like to make priorities. I might like to make it after we get through town meeting, perhaps. Um, I think, uh, I don't know that I have the bandwidth for, to take that on this summer, in addition to the other things that we're trying to do. And on Spyrock Hill, thank you, Sarah, for bringing it up. The, um, topography there is exactly why I objected to that in our last time on the grounds of having unreasonable access, physical access to that lot, uh, coming in from C Street, and the, um, significant change in topography there. And this would be another one, um, I wasn't even thinking at the time, but if we're talking about blasting regulations, this is what would be, um, an example of why I would want a third clause added to the blasting regulations.
And an example of why stormwater in the general bylaws would be a much stronger applicability.
Agreed.
So, um, if, does anybody have any objection? I'm gonna go actually talk to Paul about this, if anybody. I know, Ron, you've talked to him by email or by, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to go grab him on Tuesday morning.
Well, if you do talk to him, can you clarify the building permit and without a curb cut?
I will be happy to do that.
Could I, would it, would it, um, be stronger or bolder if it was coming, you know, if you represented the board, Sarah, to say that this was a board, um, concern?
Sure. I'll take a motion to, uh, express our concern to the building inspector about the applicability of the topo changes at the C, on C Street. I mean, I'll make a motion, sorry, not take a motion.
Although technically, we can't vote on something not on the agenda, but go ahead.
Okay.
Just to be process pure.
Right, um. Thank you.
But you can do a consensus of the board.
Okay, so I think I have consensus.
I think you do. Anyone object? Go for it, Sarah. Okay. Can I, uh, anything else? Good. Happy Fourth of July, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Your second?
Seconded.
That's great.
Yes.
Ms. Felicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Result, Mr. Olley? Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We're adjourned. Happy Fourth.
Happy Fourth, everybody. Thank you.
Good time.